Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
What time is it? Is it 6:30? It looks like it is. So I'm calling the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervise reunion board to order. Wednesday. What? And are there any adjustments to the agenda? I'd like to make one and I want any item. And that is we always do introductions. And then we can do further adjustments to the agenda. People don't mind, I think. We're still getting to know each other and there may be people curious to know who we are, but only so they know who to yell at. So I'm wondering, Andy, would you mind doing a round robin of asking people to introduce themselves in whatever order pleases you?
I can, Jack, I just want to make sure that you heard that. I think Priscilla might have had an adjustment.
Okay, sure, go ahead, Priscilla.
He would do further after, so I stopped.
Oh, okay.
But that's okay. Yeah, we need to do the minutes for February 23rd.
Yes, and I've noted that, but I didn't see them in the packets. So I think we should have them, unless there's somebody got a copy that they can run around with, which is have to do it at the next meeting.
I have a copy here. They were, they were put out last time, Jack, and then, and then we didn't vote on them. And we postponed them for this meeting.
Then let's add that when we do, when we approve minutes. All right.
So what, so you want to just go ahead and start introducing? I'll start with you.
I'm Priscilla Lambert. And I'm representing the Rockingham Board and I'm serving as clerk of this board.
Jen, because I don't know if a lot of people know you.
Yeah, my name is Jennifer Rose and I am the Transportation Coordinator.
Jim McColl from Rockingham.
Brenda Marcus representing Rockingham.
Mr. Haas, Superintendent.
Jeff Carlstrom, Westminster Board.
Chris Kevi, Rockingham Board and as the Chair of the Supervisory.
Cheryl Charles, Westminster Board.
Deb, you got your hand up, so we'll go with you. How's that?
Yeah, I had something else at the earlier communications public comment. But in any case, Deb Wright, representing Bellis Falls Junior High School. Rockingham.
Karen Merrill, Grafton, WNUSED.
Karen.
Karen Blanchard, Westminster Board.
Jane.
Inbilsy, Westminster Board.
Jack?
I'm Jack Pryor and I, I'm on the WNUSED Board and on this one. And I am Chair of this one.
And then if I can indulge, just because we got the peanut gallery here too, but so everyone knows, because he's up there, but.
Ricky Adams, our Technology Director.
Harley Sterling, also part of the peanut gallery. I'm the School Nutrition Director.
I'm Jenny Kessler. I'm a primary school coach with the Kessler.
There we go. Got everyone. And I think, I think Deb might have had, we were at adjustment step, so I didn't know, but so.
Yeah, so we're on to communications and public comment unless you want to make an adjustment to the agenda, Deb.
Well, my only, it's a, it's sort of a, sort of a comment and previous iterations of this board and others have made their chairs have made statements to try and keep meetings to two, within two hours. And I say that because long meetings where people are not concise about their comments and input makes these meetings drag out to three and four hours. And I would like to ask if this chair would, would like to take up that policy.
You know, Deb, we actually spoke with, with Andy the other day about putting suggested amount of time on all these items in an effort to go for an hour and a half and, and wind if it went to two, but it will not go to three, because if it has to go to three, we'll just move it to another meeting. Or I'll cut you off. Communications and public comments, if we may. Yeah, there is there anybody, Ricky, anybody that would like to?
Don't see any.
All right, moving on to number four. See, we're already doing a good job, Deb. Approve minutes of March 23rd, 2022. Are there any looking for a motion? First, why don't you tell me if you see anything that's wrong with him? Because there's always something. And yes.
Priscilla, I would like it moved from under the MOU, sign on a retention notice. I'd like the thing about mask mandates moved to after Cheryl's motion on the MOU. And also, we need to add Molly Bannock and Priscilla Lambert is voting yes down under Jack Pryor's motion to approve it.
All right, that's good. I would also note for the record that there's a somewhat of a garbled sentence on the, on the director's comments. And it was just that we did go to negotiations with a list of things we wanted, but we were not successful. And I think that's a better sentence and characterizes it a little more concisely. Anything else? Then taking those as friendly amendments, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Point of order, Jack. You just need to say that you just need to approve them as corrected. You don't have to have a motion, you don't have to vote.
Well, we do have a pardon.
You don't have to vote per Robert's rules.
Okay, then unless there's an objection, we will approve the minutes of, of March 23rd as corrected. So you can see that we're going to have a tight ship run by Priscilla, who's definitely memorized Robert's over the last little while.
Thank you, Jack, trying to save time.
Oh, moving on then, let's touch the February, what was it, 22nd minutes? And I don't know if everyone has those.
Pardon? We did March 23rd.
The March 23rd ones now.
March 23rd, it's been noted that we didn't, we didn't approve the ones for February 22nd. Is that correct last time around?
That's the ones we just corrected.
That's, that was the corrections Priscilla was talking about.
Okay, all right. So then, do we have anything else?
March 23rd corrections would be Elise and Pam will need to be moved to others in attendance as they were not voting members. I think that's the only thing I saw.
All right. With, with that note, then we are, what are we doing? Priscilla, are we not, we just noting it and that there, without objection?
Right, and then you, and then the Chair approves them as corrected.
All right, well, then the Chair is with, unless there is objection, approving these as corrected.
I actually have a question. I'm not sure understood, yeah, Jack, this is Cheryl, I'm sorry. I just didn't understand what Priscilla just did, moving two voting members from the WNUSED.
They're not WNUSED.
Yeah, they are.
There can only be three voting members and you've got.
Oh, I got it. I got it. Okay, thank you.
And Lynn.
And again, for the record, we have all, all members of all boards are welcome to come, but those who have voting and those who have voting privileges are the only ones that count for purposes of forum and for purposes of voting. All right, moving on then. We are at report five, A Superintendent.
I would, I'd like to cede some of my time to Ms. Kessel. Would you like me to read it or do you want to just go ahead and do? I didn't mean to throw you on the spot. I apologize. We should talk to her.
I'm sure, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
So I'm here.
So the mic is, the mic is the, the owl. So you're welcome to sit.
So I am here to recognize Harley Sterling tonight, your School Nutrition Director for the district, as the winner of the number three Vermont School Nutrition Innovation and Advocacy Award. He was chosen as the winner of this award for his constant dedication to nourishing all students as part of education, positively changing the food and nutrition culture through innovation and advocacy. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with Harley's amazing work in feeding the children of the district. He has really stood out in Vermont's school food nutrition area for his fresh cooking and feeding students local ingredients, which is pretty unique among school food. So we wanted to acknowledge that. And in the past year especially, he, you know, was being awarded for his innovation because he kind of came back to school with the pandemic and students were being fed. But he recognized that there was still a huge need of families receiving food. So he was able to do a trial of meal boxes, which families were able to come, pick up boxes of fresh ingredients, Whole Foods, including recipes, and had two to three meals per day provided per student. He did this at Thanksgiving and Christmas vacation with over 700 meal boxes distributed. And him and his team, based on that, decided to continue this and provided meals throughout every school vacation, as well as during the summer of 2021, with over 500 meal boxes going home per week, which is pretty amazing and definitely innovative. Most districts were not doing that. And he also came up with the idea of being able to secure more funding by contracting with the Keene District and doing their summer meals as well. So not only were our students being fed amazing food, but also the Keene students were. And that was bringing in more food to be able to send home meal boxes, as well as pay his staff exceptionally well. So whenever I speak to Harley, he speaks only of his staff. He's like, it's not about me, it's about my staff. My staff is amazing, my team does everything. So I want to make sure that they are acknowledged as well. So this is for you, Harley. Thank you so much for all of your amazing work. You really appreciate it and my family appreciates it.
Well, in the interest of keeping it brief, as always, in everyone's time, I just want to express a continued and profound gratitude for the members of this community and the members of this board and everyone who helps make this possible. You mentioned my staff, our staff, they're, you know, they do it, they're everything, every day. And then when it came to the meal boxes, the people who don't always get acknowledged, the maintenance staff who put out the cones every day and helped us set up the tables and set up tents. This truly, this project since the beginning, since the get go, has been a collaboration and a community effort. And I truly couldn't do it without all of the support. I know there have always been some challenges and nothing is ever perfect. It's hard to agree to a thousand people, thousand students to agree on anything, let alone what constitutes. But we do try and we try to take the critical feedback and the tough love at times. Right, Deb? But, you know, we can't do it without that either, because that helps us get better. And so again, just thank you all so much. Thank you for, for so many of you who have been there from the beginning and helping this project out the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So noted, thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Haas?
I, I did share with the board my report. I can read through it really fast or?
In the interest of time, unless someone wants it read, I think we're good. Did everybody, everybody do their homework? Yes, okay, well, I'll believe that. Is there, there's a P finance?
I really, I don't have anything at this point in, in finance, but, you know, just other than we're continuing to work with Glenn and with Cassie, and those are our consultants. Jim Vazina has been working a little bit behind the scenes, getting up to speed so that when he starts here at the end of the month, I think we're going to hit the ground running with them and be in good shape. Just as Harley talks about his team, the folks in the business office, I have to commend them, the work that they've been trying to do to, to, to get things in order has been really huge. You know, it was noted at Rockingham, just, you know, we're getting our consolidated grants are being audited because we, you know, we hit the rubric or type, you know, the trifecta on the rubric. And it's just a lot of work. It's a lot of extra work, but they're doing the work. And so I'm really thankful about it, so.
All right, Transportation is five C and I, you have your Transportation Director there, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Hello all. I guess this already went out, all the numbers. I can go over it really quick, where we can go ahead and pass on to break to the question. So that's you both.
I'd like to hear it.
Okay. So we've been through a lot of changes lately. We're sad at the loss of Walt. Alby, he's missed deeply and he's hard to replace his winning smile and quick wit. He was always somebody there for us, never missed a day up until his illness. We also saw Sandy McDermott retire after 10 years with us. She drove for 40 years driving a bus and she, she finally retired. We did hire Richard Talbot to become our spare driver, though he's on a dedicated route. Now, our priority is always to get the students to enroll in school safely. We inspect our buses every three months to see if there's any defects. And if that, if there are, then we get those fixed right away. That's one of the state requirements as well. Let's see, we do have, the new federal motor carriers regulations have come out. They have required that every school district have a plan in place to, to get their new folks off, new hires be trained to a specific standard. Before, we used to just have one of our drivers train the folks coming off the street and to be able to get their CDO license. But now we're going to have to do it through a certain standard. So Andy and I are working on getting funding for that, for the curriculum, to build that program. And our buses are supposed to, the end of life for a bus is 250,000 miles. We're not there. If you want to pass those around, I do have the mileage for all the, for all the buses, except for one, that bus is in Maine, believe it or not, getting fixed. Yeah. And then also on here, it has a year of each bus as well. So you can see where we are in our fleet. EPA has come out with a new school bus program that's going to be coming out at the end of April to pay for buses with high emissions, for diesel buses. And we have a few of those in our fleet, so we're hoping to receive a grant for those as well. We can also go electric. I just want to give you the pros and cons of doing that, just so we're all aware of that. We do have propane buses now. Those buses, we know how they work, we know how to get them fixed, we know how to fuel them. The average range of a propane bus is 450 miles. And we also, you know, use our local distributor to help boost our economy as well. So, so we don't need any infrastructure for that. The same, the electric bus could go about 150 miles. So it's a great investment for to and from school, but to go on our trips, it doesn't make sense for us. We do have electricity ran to the yard, that's to plug them, plug the buses in, in winter time. So we do have a, up on that, but there will probably be more infrastructure required to go electric. Biggest hurdle of that is the infrastructure, which would cost quite a bit. The cost of electric buses is about $336,000. Well, a diesel bus is about 90 and propane is about 96. But it is the wave of the future, future. And as time goes by, we'll have more grants will come out and it may turn out to be more cost effective to go like electric than propane that we are now, or diesel. So that is coming. So we need new buses. As you can see on that list, our buses, we have a few that are outdated. We currently have, I was thinking that maybe we don't need all the buses that we have. We have three buses in our yard, they just sit there and rot, literally. So we have 15, 77 passenger bus, two small, 25 passenger bus, two eight passenger vans. We only need seven. 77, 77, 77 passenger buses, the three spare, spare buses, three small buses, as I call them, of 25 passenger, one spare and two passenger buses. And how that breaks down is Westminster has Grafton has two, Saxon River has one, the high school, middle school and central has two. And there is a spare bus, three spare buses. The Life Skills for the High School has one 25 passenger bus. And then the middle school and elementary school has one 25 passenger bus as well. The River Valley Tech could use a 25 passenger bus instead of taking a 77 passenger bus. There's only about seven students. So there's no reason to send this bus. And that bus goes up and down this highway to Springfield twice a day. So, you know, getting a 25 passenger bus is, is cost effective, I believe. So to let go of some of the buses as an idea is nine is rusting and will not be inspected next year. I've talked to a mechanic. 10 is the same. 13 is a 2010 bus. 18 is 2006 and it is rusted as well as has high mileage. And 12 is one of our 25 passenger buses. It's a 2015, it is rotting. It's going to cost more money to replace the cross members than it is to replace the bus. Just doesn't make any sense. I won't go over the buses one more time, but. So I think that we need to, to purchase two 25 passenger buses to make everything work. And get rid of those five. Is an idea that I've come up with. And those buses cost between 36 and 45,000 dollars.
Are they LP gas, are they?
Yeah, they are gas.
These are not the gasoline or, but they're the LP gas.
They, they haven't come out with an LP 25 passenger bus van, bus yet. If they, if there's one out there, I'd love to get it just to keep going with the propane.
So this is gasoline?
Yeah, this one gasoline, yeah. Did you make diesel, but I'm trying to stay away from that as well.
Can you repeat the ones that you want to get rid of?
Sure.
Everyone, since people haven't been asked questions yet, I want people to be able to, but I also want it to be done in an orderly fashion. Hardy's had his hand up and I'm going to recognize him if you don't mind.
My question is, what's the lead time on purchasing these buses? How long is it going to take you to get them if they're approved?
So about six months, from what I'm told from the dealers.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the board. We, we have a, a Buildings and Grounds, which I'm sort of renaming into Facilities and Infrastructure, if you will. And do you want the entire board to go through this? Or would you rather send it off to Molly and Buildings and Grounds and Infrastructure to work out both a plan for replacement and a, and consideration of something that would preserve the buses? We talked about a, we talked, talked about a washing station last year. Would it be useful to defer this to that committee rather than get into the weeds tonight? What, what's your thoughts, people? In the interest of efficiency, are we going to end up asking all the same questions anyway?
Alby has, yeah.
Go ahead. Alby, and then Deb.
Jack, I, I think that, you know, so wherever you want to name the committee, we used to have a.
Yeah.
Transportation Committee, Building and Grounds, wherever you want to dub it as. We haven't had a report and that's probably why I stepped up and said, you know, I'd like to hear, because we haven't had a reporter seen from this position in, I bet, over two years. So I, I asked a couple of times last year where transportation reports were. So I think I'd like to follow this a little bit and look it over before I was ready to make a decision. So if it's going to go to a committee that I'm proud of, that's what I would like to do.
All right. Deb, you had your hand up and if other people did, someone would have.
Only to say that that makes sense, that the committee would go, move forward if there's a budget already lined in place and, and come back to us with recommendations.
Good, and a half an hour's gone by and so you're going to save some time. There you go. All right, so I'm going to recommend this be referred to, to Buildings, Grounds and Transportation. And, and we, and look forward to a quick, a report either next time or the time after, if possible. I'm wondering if we need to, was there a note sent to Walt's family by the, by the, by the staff and Superintendent? And do we, should we be sending a, a note of recognition and appreciation for his years of service?
We, we did through my office, Jack sent something, but I would encourage the board to consider something as well.
And I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the Chair to write a note to Walt's family thanking him for his service and as a remembrance of his dedication to this district and to this. Thank you. Any discussion? Harry, none, we'll get that done ASAP. Moving on to other committees, if any, I don't think we have any, we are going to get down to that seven. Old unfinished business for discussion, six A. The review of the required policies, C7, C8, F1, F23 and F24, they were in your packets. Is this the first reading, Priscilla? Remind me.
They have been posted, Jack, and we have done the 10 days and they are here for approval today.
All right, then I will, I will, is there a wish by anyone to consider these separately or can we approve them collectively?
Collectively.
I hear you. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the required policies, C7, C8, F1, F23, F24, as provided in your packet.
Move.
Got it. Discussion. You got, yeah, go ahead.
On F23, there's a blank. Several blank spaces. That are in our packet, including the name of the school district. That are in our package, including the name of the school district. The asset, this is capitalization of assets. Our favorite topics. There's a blank where we should have the maximum individual component value.
About five thousand dollars.
So it should read five thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's what I thought, but.
But there is, but so can we correct that and? That be acceptable? Chris? Was looking for.
I would, I would just suggest as corrected and.
Think it is a, then we'll move these as corrected. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. First of the folks, let's, let's just do it by roll call. I think that's what we're supposed to do in these hybrid meetings, so. Since you're there, Molly, would you call the roll for the people physically present?
Absolutely. There's only one problem, there's a couple I don't know, but we're going to get there.
Awesome, thank you.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
What is your name?
Jeff.
Jeff, thank you, Jeff. Chris?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
All right, then moving.
Money, so question on that, should Westminster be voted on?
Hold, hold on, Priscilla, unless there's a question about somebody voting, I want to get the votes to the people that are remote and I believe the.
That's what the question is, Jack. It's not budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I called on Cheryl and I, I shouldn't have called on Cheryl. I thought I could call on Cheryl because it wasn't any bill budget.
You can't because it's not.
So, so when the board, when, when it is a budgetary issue, the board expands to twelve members and Westminster has, has the opportunity to vote and it's not. The board says.
Yeah, my view is these policies will govern the district and of, as was said at the SBE. The chair is allowed to have an extremely expansive view of what involves the Westminster, so. In this case, I'm going to say it involves Westminster and could theoretically have budgetary implications, so why not have them vote?
Thank you, Jack. You have the authority to do that. Appreciate that.
My nephews, Jeff and I, so far.
I'm just going to ask, I wasn't sure where Jeff was from, are you Westminster?
Then we'll get Deb and Karen and everybody in a sec.
Jack, Jack, we're just, we're on to people on Zoom for voting.
Oh, Deb Wright?
I and Karen's been waving her hand, I'm not sure what she means.
Karen Blanchard?
I, yes.
And did you have a question as well or just?
No, I'm just.
All right, and Hardy?
Yes.
And can your non-voting member, correct?
Correct.
So when we note your presence, but not your vote. Thank you. So we got that done. Where are we? So that was, that was reviewed, view six A is done. MOU, I put this on the, on the, on the. On the agenda reluctantly, but I thought that there, since there were so many questions raised about whether or not the. February twenty second meeting had a quorum or not. And even though it's this chair's opinion that we did, I think it's important to just confirm for the record. That this board confirms the vote of February twenty second. Now, if somebody wants to table this, just let it go.
Point of order?
Yes.
You can't confirm something that's been, that has been voted and is in process of being implemented. You can't, a meeting with no quorum can be and it if, and it's in Robert's rules, forty six to ten. The chair at that one, we had a quorum and you just said, in your opinion, we had a quorum, so we should not be voting. The only way that you can is to rescind the vote and I don't think we want to do that.
You know, I, this was mostly an attempt to make everybody comfortable with, but we will not in future. A review or question forums retroactively because one, you really can't. And two, as I said, the board chair has that power, but only sort of admonished not to use it. I'm, then, then I guess what I'm listening for, Priscilla, is a, a move to just table this indefinitely.
Okay, then I would, I would move to lay it on the table.
All right, that's a privileged motion.
Definitely, if you want.
I like that, wait on the table indefinitely. So that's a privileged motion require, requires a roll call. So let's do it. Molly, indulge me.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris? Cheryl? Molly's a yes.
All right, so the folks in, in, in the ether, Deb Wright?
No.
Okay, Karen Blanchard?
Yes.
Hardy Merrill?
Yes.
All right, the eyes appear to have it, the item is laid on the table indefinitely. Six C, committee assignments. Funny thing, everybody wanted to be on the budget committee and I don't know why it's most work we have, especially since we're. We've expanded it in the note I sent all of you to include long-term planning. Because I think that you can't do a short-term budget unless you know what long-term plan is adhering to. What I would add, I've sent you all. I didn't itemize the members of that committee because it was like majority of you, but I did. Select some of you for the other, other tasks and I gave you all a description. What I'd like you to do is to look at, look at it, get back to me and if there are objections to this. Let me know and with a note that we will try to make the first meeting of the month committee. Meeting time, I'm hoping everybody will be on a committee rather than on, you know, two or three of them because it gets hard. With the exceptions of things like negotiations. And, and CI and continuous improvement. So take a look, get back to me one-on-one and let's do it that way and if, at our next meeting, if you don't like the descriptions of the committees. We can change them then. Is that acceptable unless somebody's really stressed with that? I see somebody that's at least mildly distressed. Yes, Deb?
I have a, oh, I have a question.
Okay.
You, you said so many people wanted to be on budget, but I don't see any names listed.
I, I simply because I was scrapping this together this afternoon and I want, and literally if you're. Listed on one of these other committees, you're probably not listed on budget, so you know, you're on it, Hardy's on it. Chris Kibby's on it. And, and I was just absolutely drawing a blank as to who else was on it and that was my artful way of pretending I remembered. So I've got to go take a quick look and I'll, I'll put that list on there as well. Yes, Priscilla?
Biggs and I are on it from Rockingham.
All righty, like I said, it's a big committee, but I just want, there may be some people I may ask to step off and on to some of these other tasks. Because they're equally important. I particularly think that the, that the audit and oversight is extremely important. And I also think that we. Some of this infrastructure stuff is dealt with because of Esser. So off we go. I hope that will be acceptable and I'll get back to, I, I will call you all individually over the next couple of days. So is there any further discussion on this? See, Deborah, we're going to move this thing in depth in less than an hour.
Jack, just a question. So you, you said you did send an email and I don't have it yet.
All right, I, I sent it via all boards and I, if you didn't get it, I will. I will check to find out why you didn't because that was supposedly everybody did. Hardy, yeah?
I think it came out at six fourteen.
Yeah. Like I said, when I say last minute, I'm not kidding and my apologies, it's been kind of a rocky, weird week and a half here, so. Those who can't tell, I've got the blue and you don't want to be near me, so it's been, set her to that. Does my dog eat my, ate my homework, excuse?
Jack, excuse me, this is Karen. So what I got was from. Something from, anyway. The last thing that I got was from Jeffrey Conrad. And. It is a gobbledygook and I mean, it says Westminster Board, hi, and then there's HGKUDH.
That, that, you should have got something at six fourteen from me to all board members and yes, apparently. Some young person somehow sent a message on his email to all boards. I have no idea how and we can, that's what happened there.
Okay, so I did not get. Your email. If you said all boards, I, all I do is, you know, I have, I'm just putting this forward. The W N E S U, the, my email there did not get, did not get something from you, Jack, so that's all I wanted to say.
I will take, we, I will speak with Nicole and we will take care of that and.
Okay.
That you've got, because there were several emails over the last day that you should have gotten, that would have been one of them.
Okay, well, Nick, are you saying that Nicole sent it out or you did?
I sent it out to all boards, but I don't know if that all boards thing has all the members in it that it's supposed to. And that's the only reason I can think of why it would have not got to you.
Okay, well, I've got lots from Nicole is what I'm wanting to say to you, but not from you specifically, so there we go.
This is Andy. If, if I did get it at six fourteen, it is listed to all boards, but. As you're saying, we may not have updated the all boards with all the new members, so. What I can do is I will resend it because I know we have updated all the individual. I'll resend that to everybody right now.
Yeah, thank you for that because, you know, I, I tend to. Okay. Sounds like we're going to get that straightened out and we'll see.
No, thank you very much for that.
Because wait until you find out all the work I gave you. All right, so there it is. With that done, on to seven A. Andy, this is, this you mentioned briefly, tell us about this.
Seven A, so. The, the speech language pathology assistance and the certified occupational therapy assistants. Have asked that they be. Allowed to have the NEA, the WNEA. Negotiate on their behalf and they are asking that the boards voluntarily. Allow them to be admitted into that association. There is a, a vote before the Labor Board that will happen by April twenty eighth. Actually read the ballots and so there's six members involved, there's. Three CODAs and, and, and I'm sorry, two CODAs and four SLPAs. And. We're supposed to start negotiations on the twenty seventh. The ballot will be one day off of that, so. So it's kind of, we can, we can let it go to the ballot and, and, and see how that rolls out or boards can voluntarily add them in. All of these folks sit under this board, so.
All right, so any questions for Andy about this? And I would imagine that at least a few. Or not?
What does that mean for us?
There you go.
So what does it mean if they're accepted into the association? Right now they are employees at will. And so therefore it would mean rewriting part of the staff. Support staff contract to include them because they would not fit into the paraprofessional. Category, they would not fit into the custodial or secretarial part. And so it would be a whole new section we'd have to write with a new schedule because it would be paid at a different rate.
What does it mean for them?
Well, being in, being in the association gives them protection as far as. For dismissal as an employee at will, they could just be dismissed at any moment, so that's probably the biggest piece. It would, while we always work to have some alignment of salaries so that they're. So they're, they're comparable type of thing. This would have a salary schedule, much like our teachers and our paraprofessionals have, so they would know, they would be acknowledged for how many years of service and, and there would be that piece. Years ago, we did note that the. The SLPAs and, and the CODAs were, especially the CODAs, were paid. Under what the region was paying for CODAs and so as director, I was working to work to increase that to get it to some point, but. Through negotiations, I mean, I guess that's the, the rub there is that they would have the ability to collectively bargain.
What is your recommendation?
I, I, seeing the disparity that, that had been there, I think that there would be some fairness to bring them in. Many of them. Started out with us as paraprofessionals and when they moved over, their salaries weren't increased a lot as they moved over. So it is a specialized category. It's a small group. I don't, I really don't know what, how much impact it would have on the overall collective bargaining agreement. So I, I, I'd actually have to do a little bit more research on that, but. Give you a fair answer, so I apologize.
Sorry for blurting out three questions in a row, Jack, but I'm all set now.
Nation, anyway, Jack, so we brought, we talked about this at the Rockingham Board meeting. Monday night and we passed over it without action.
Yep.
And. Perhaps in doing that, we've actually. Over for every board because every board would have to agree to this.
Right.
To, to add something to the.
So you, your, your view is we may have mooted this by the action of the Rock Board.
Yep.
All right, let me just share an observation or two and.
I could explain.
Go ahead.
Now was that. That this is a negotiating point that really. Is for the negotiators to. Work with the. Board staff to, to include or not.
Jack?
Yep. Oh, I'm not sure that Chris is. Chris, have you done your point?
Yeah.
All right, Priscilla?
Okay, um, we took no action, so I mean, it's, I think it's totally up to whatever. Andy's recommending or the other, but Andy, did you speak to the fact that it's going to the Labor Board and will in, in essence be?
So I, I was going to bring that up as, as Chris was speaking, I was going to wait for him to. I had to kind of finish up a little bit. This will pass, that all those members, those six members will, will vote. To, to ask for the WNEA to represent them, so I do believe it will happen no matter what.
They knew that, it just happens?
Then they will have, yes, then they would be part and brought in, folded into the WNEA, so.
Thank you.
Not to put my thumb on this, but A, I think we've been, it's been mooted by the action of the Rock Board. Secondly, candidly, I think if we voluntarily admit them, we don't let them be on the record one way or the other about it. And I like to have people have votes about whether they join a union. And third, I do have a small concern that we've seen the teaching staff hijack the NEA process. When it comes to, when it comes to paras in the past and I worry that we're, that we are at some risk of doing that again. I, I'm not sure that what, because we're going to have to write a whole, a whole section. a whole section, uh, that we don't have the current waiver contract, uh, to admit these folks and to set up their schedule and do a lot of stuff that's not in the current, uh, contract. And that may not be something that our, uh, uh, our negotiations committee members thought they had signed up for. So I, you know, I, I'd entertain a motion to table this candidly, uh, for all these reasons. And, uh, with the, uh, let the members vote as they wish to vote.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I second it.
All right, any further discussion on this point? Hearing none, a roll call again, uh, if you will. Matt, Assistant Chair.
Priscilla. Can I ask a question first? What, what does ta, good does tabling it do for us?
Tabling it basically means that they will, uh, that the, uh, members, the potential members of, uh, that may join will still vote. But we are not, we're not voluntarily admitting them without asking them. If they, uh, if they vote to join the union, well, they voted to join the union.
Did they ask for this? This would be my question, Jack. But is that in on here because they asked for?
Yes, I can, I can confirm that they are the ones that, um, that their signatures were on, um, the request to allow it to happen.
Okay, so they are asking us for it, Jack.
But they haven't had a formal vote, I guess is the point.
But if all their signatures are on there now, right?
Who else has got their hands up? Karen and, and who else? Karen, go ahead.
So I think I'm a bit confused about this. Can't we, can't we vote about supporting their effort? Or something like that? In other words, come forward or not, depending. I mean, I happen to.
If, if you would like to make a motion to that effect, uh, have at it.
There is a motion on the floor, point of order.
True, um, so we could table that and then Karen, if you would wish to bring up your, uh, motion, we can do that. How's that sound?
Well, that's fine with me as long as it's fine with everybody else.
All right, so, uh, the, the motion right now is to table, table this. Um, uh, and then we'll go on to Karen's motion. So, uh, we are, uh, unless there are further objections or questions, uh, Molly, why don't you do the round robin there, please? Finish it up for me.
Priscilla?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
I have one null and.
All right, then we're going to move on to, uh, uh, Karen, did you have another question or?
No, I thought I'm supposed to say, are we supposed to say yes to this table?
We, we are, we are. So Karen, are you saying yes?
I'm saying yes to the table.
I just had to call on you yet. Deb Wright.
Yes, and just a point of order for new members, we have, if we have to do a roll call because some are on Zoom, it has to be one name called at a time, just so we don't get missed, that's, but that's it, yeah.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, Deb, and your vote is?
Yes.
And Hardy?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to move on to Karen's, uh, Karen, if you got a.
Point of order, Jack.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't think we can take up another motion on that, on that.
As we did.
Thing because we have just put it, laid it on the table.
So we, we volunteer, the, the.
Don't take up another motion involving it.
The motion was involved the voluntary addition of, uh, these members to the NEA. Uh, Karen has not yet made her motion, so I'll be interested into what she says. But I think what she was suggesting was, notwithstanding the voluntary addition, that she would like to make a motion to the effect that we would support this if they voted for it. Would that be a, a rough characterization?
That is correct.
All right, and I'm going to rule that that is, that is okay here. So, uh, Karen, you want to make your motion instead of me making it for you?
Well, I make a motion that we, um, su- support. I mean, you know, that we give our support to what they choose to do. Is that?
That we'll support the vote of the, of the members on this.
Of the member, what they choose, I'm saying they, but the members, what the members choose to do.
All right. Um, with that understood, uh, is there any discussion on this point? Uh, I'm not seeing any hands raised on wine. How about you, uh, Molly, anybody in the room?
I see nothing.
All right, then let's proceed with another roll call. Uh, let's do it from, uh, Molly, do it in the main room if you would.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Did everybody?
Yes.
All right, uh, Molly, did you vote?
Yes.
All right, Deb?
Yes.
Uh, Karen Blanchard?
Yes.
Hardy Merrill?
Yes.
We have a vote and the affirmative to that effect. Okay, great. Seven B, LEAP. Who owns this?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, the LEAP is what is, it's done annually, it's the local education, uh, agency plan of assurances for the individuals with disabilities, Education Act, Part B. And it's for fiscal year twenty-three, which is next year. And basically it is, um, the, um, the board is saying that it will, um, you know, follow all the guidelines and, um, uh, and make sure that I D E A B monies are spent on students with, um, individuals with disabilities.
Did we have anything, uh, you'll remind me because I do have a cold and it's forgetting everything. Do we have, do we have anything on this in the packet explaining to people what LEAP is or what the vote is for?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I just, I'm telling you, it's been a tough day. All right, uh, let's, I'll entertain a motion to, what, what, what are you looking for? A motion to approve the, uh, the LEAP plan? Would that be correct?
I will need all the board chairs to sign.
And to direct, okay, but, and so you'll need a vote from each board with the director, uh, with a directive for that chair to sign. So in this case, it would be a vote and an authorization, actually a direction of me to sign. I need a motion to that effect. Deb, okay, great, we've got it. Um, any discussion?
Um, we're, we're, we're looking for some exact wording.
Jeff, when is the, when is the timeline that that's needed by?
Uh, good question.
Jeff, we're looking for the, we're just getting the wording, Jeff, we're not quite ready.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to hustle everybody because I'm trying to prove to Deb that we can move, move, um, move, move the train.
Not really that intimidating, am I?
Well, I didn't get it done in an hour, so let's see what we can do, about ninety minutes.
Jack, I'll, I'll make a go at the motion.
Awesome.
Chris. Uh, so I, I moved to approve the local education agency plan assurances for the Windham Northeast Supervisor Union for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
And to authorize?
Authorize, authorize the board chairs to sign the assurances.
Uh, when, uh, when that is done, Chris, uh, Andy's got it in his hands, I think. Uh, let's send that around to all the other, uh, boards so that we all use the same language. That sounds fine. Uh, any discussion? Just where we were at.
No, when it's, when it's due.
That was the question, yes. When does it do, uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Um, I don't know because I was handed it, um, so I, I believe, let me do. Before the end of the fiscal year. Yeah, it, it, I mean, it needs to be up, it needs to be uploaded and, and due, um, you know, no later than June thirtieth. Um, but, um, there may be a date that it is due sooner than that. Um, but Ms. Alexander was unable to be here and I, I did not get to see her today because I was up in Burlington. So I have not spoken for her, so.
Well, nothing wrong with getting it done early, um, okay. Um, any other questions anyone has? Then let's do the roll call and my assistant chair will do the room.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yep.
Carol?
Yes.
And Molly is a yes.
All right, and the remotes, uh, Deb Wright?
Yes.
Uh, Karen Blanchard?
Yes.
Hardy Merrill?
Yes.
Excellent, so we have, we have an approval, we have language to send to other boards. We're moving along. Seven C, teacher roster approval. And this has to be done by the fifteenth. Am I correct on that, uh, Andy?
It's correct, um, it's, um, it, it did not get into your packets and I do apologize, um, the difference in the list uh, from last year to this year is we have seven resignations. Um, and we have, um, one teacher who's, um, being non-renewed. Um, but there is a, uh, a, a teacher that is currently, see if I can, she's currently an intern with us that, uh, we're looking to put in that place, so.
All right.
But I do apologize, I did email it to, uh, members here, um, while we're here. So I know people in front of us don't have it, but it is in your, your inbox, so.
Uh, hopefully in that, in that all boards, um, e- email, but, uh, we'll see. Okay, um, is there any question about this? Because, I mean, we could, we could delay it and have a special meeting on it, but I, uh, because I do worry people didn't see it. But, uh, we can also just do it on trust and move on. Uh, any questions anyone has?
Jack?
Yes.
Would, would Andy please clarify what he's, the seven resignations and the non-renewal that's being substituted?
Yeah. What would you like me to clarify?
I don't see a list.
I'm trying to figure, I don't see a list either. I'm trying to figure out how many and, and what we're doing.
So I, I.
I'm uncomfortable without seeing the list.
Okay.
So.
So I, I just emailed it, so I don't know why, um, but I will, I just shared it with the W N A S U board, but I can individually share it with everyone.
Probably just taking time.
So.
Well, how would people like to proceed? Would, you, you want him to read the list, which, how many members, how many people is this, Andy?
Uh, fifty.
Do people want to do this or would they prefer to table this? Uh, yeah, but it will mean it's, we'll have to have a five-minute meeting in the next few days. Don't all speak up at once.
I, it's Chris, I mean, this was the purpose for this meeting. So I think it's worth taking a little time here to get the list in our hands and, and do it.
All right, so, um, you, what would you, uh, I'm, I'm going to have.
I'm working on it right now, Jack, getting it out to people.
Okay, let's spend just a minute or two, uh, while that's happening. Karen, I saw your hand up, I think.
Well, I was trying to figure out, I'm actually on vacation. So I'm trying to figure out if we each received, I don't know if we can do this procedurally. If we all got this list and then put it, do we have to be all together to say yes to things? This is what I need to understand. In other words, if something was sent out and we looked at it and we said yes, if we sent yeses back by ru, by writing, is that legitimate or not?
We have till, uh, at this point said that is not. Uh, what I'd like to do is, why don't we, while, while, uh, Andy is doing that, getting that out to everybody, uh, why don't we move on to the next item, which is onboarding? Uh, and, and we could talk a little bit about that and then we'll come back to, uh, seven C. Uh, and we can in fact put that off to the last item if we have to. Is that acceptable to people? Seems like I'm getting nods from the room.
Email has come through.
All right, all right.
What is onboarding?
Onboarding is a fancy HR term that says, uh, when you come on to a new position, you should know what the new position is all about. You should know what you're expected to do. You should, um, you know, you've been onboarded for a while, uh, uh, Jakes, but there are people, but it took, you know, as it did for all of us that came in cold turkey years ago, it took, uh, it took kind of a while to figure out what was going on. And we'd like our new members not to have to sort of guess their way through the process. We have, uh, now a, a draft, uh, manual. Uh, there are, there are, uh, courses you can take through, uh, either the Vermont, uh, uh, the, the Vermont, uh, School Board Association or the New Hampshire one, candidly, which does a better job. And the question is, what, we had this discussion at the, uh, at the, uh, Unified Board, which was, what would you like us to provide you? We, we, we started out with, uh, Robert's Rules, hopefully the Vermont statutes. Soon enough, copy of, uh, uh, a copy of all our policies and procedures. Uh, and, uh, there is that, uh, draft packet that Andy sent as part of, uh, uh, the material that you have received from him. So the question is, what else would you like? Uh, and do you, do you want us to bring in, um, you want us to bring in Pietra? We did that last year and has sort of a, a round robin, what boards do and what boards don't do, uh, as a substitute. So this is an open discussion.
Jack, are you talking about a retreat?
Uh, well, retreat could absolutely be part of it, uh, and, and, uh, you know, I tend to think of retreat as sort of the, setting the, the great and grand agenda for the year. But, uh, it absolutely could be that as well. Uh, I saw Hardy's hand up and then I think I might have seen Karen's. Hardy, go ahead.
I've received quite a bit of information in the last few days and, uh, I think it's going to take me a little while to digest it. So my suggestion would be is, uh, let's digest what we have just been given as a new board member and then move forward if we need more information in a little while.
I think that's a splendid suggestion. And, and unless there's an objection, I'm going to move from seven, uh, D back to seven C now that everybody's got their teacher rosters. And, uh, I guess at this point we're looking for a resolution. Oh, I'm seeing a hand, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Uh, I'm asking, um, I'm seeing Title One on here and interventionist on here and all the others, this isn't broken down. So we know what is being built back to the districts and what are grants? And that, I, I can't tell just by looking and quick like this. So I need more information. Can you break that down for me?
I can break it down for you, um, but, um, you know, so anyone who's a special education teacher that works for the S U, um, and those are billed, I mean, that's special education, so those are billed back to the different districts. Um, anyone who's a, can set a Title One or consolidated federal grant, um, uh, is someone who is paid through, through a grant and is not billed to the local districts. Anyone who's early child, um, early childhood, um, special educator, um, there are two of them that are billed, um, to the I D E A grant. Um, and then there is, um, one, um, that is, comes out of local. And I can, I mean, I can, if you're fine with me giving out names, I can do names. I mean, I'm just trying to go through there. Um, the early special, early childhood educator, uh, down to the bottom, uh, line fifty is paid out of a grant, doesn't come out of local. Um, and then, um, that would, um, again, an L T S and interventionist would be paid out of the Esther Grant.
Can you tell me how many are, are left that are being built back? That's, I guess, what I'm asking.
You'll have to give me a few minutes.
I'm, I'm assuming the, um, psych, the, um, which one? I missed it now. Um, the speech language pathologist is also built back, right?
Yes, because that's. Yes, because that's special education, that's.
Right.
People have questions? Just because I want to make sure everybody has the equal shot at this.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm, um, surprised to see grant people on here, but.
I, I think this list got thrown together very, honestly, I've been, I've been gone for two days, so I do apologize. Um, and so.
We're not issuing contracts for grant people right now. We can't until later. And so this list, I believe, should only have people that the WNESU.
And that's what I'm cleaning up right now.
So I think in your brains, you should be looking at this list and ignoring the grant people because.
Um, just as a. Chris? Chris? Pardon me, everyone. Uh, as a point of information, and this may have caused some confusion. Uh, last year, uh, the board directed, uh, the superintendent to try to make sure that we saw all the expenditures, not just the ones the taxpayers paid for. And I suspect this was in that vein, but you are correct that the lists that we approve are the ones that are funded by tax, that are, that are not special grants. There, there are people, but it's, you would be useful to know who they are. Uh, if, if that's a point of clarification. What we do want to see, the whole budget, we do want to see the whole stat, the whole, uh, teaching staff and support staff. But yes, this is an approval of people that we have contracts for and who we are responsible for.
So there's a one, two, three, four, five, six. Well, wait, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. I just lost it, of course. Hang on one second. Sorry.
I'm so sorry, everyone. I actually have to. I'm just sorry. I, I have to leave and, um, so I'm, are, are we voting on this now or not voting on this now? I need to know.
Not voting now.
Okay.
Jack, I, I mean, I, I can, I have a total of 24 teachers, um, that are special educators. There is the English language learner teacher, the float nurse, um, and, um.
I thought that was Esther.
No, it's paid out local.
Oh. Should be.
And a speech language pathologist and a, and a special ed teacher. So it's a total of 24. And of those 24s, there's, as I said, one non-renewal and, um, there should be, there are three retirements and, and one resignation, so.
Okay. Uh, I, just going forward, we'll, we'll do this better next time. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm very committed to not having a special five-minute meeting if we can avoid it. Are people at a point where they can vote for this before we lose our quorum?
So, Jeff, I'll make a motion to approve the T WNESU teacher roster uh, as presented and corrected by the superintendent, uh, including the, uh, non-renewal.
Very good. Uh, is there any further, uh, further discussion?
Jack, I really need to see the roster of what we're voting on. I, I'm feeling very uncomfortable.
All right, um. How about the rest of you? Do you feel like we can do this? Cause I'm, 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 it's 7:48 and I'm, I'm not, I'm going to try to avoid having a special meeting, but we will have one if that's the consensus. Do you want to come back at this, uh, in a couple of days?
Let's call and vote.
That's correct. Sorry. So then we've got this on, so the only choices here are to vote yea or nay on the, on, on the, on the, on the, on the motion. So I'm going to reverse the order. We're going to do it for the folks, uh, online. Uh, Deb, yea or nay?
Yea.
Uh, Hardy Merrill.
Yes.
Uh, have we lost? Yeah, I guess we, we, we didn't quite stretch it out enough for Karen. So who's in the, who's in the room? Uh, Molly?
Priscilla.
No.
Jim.
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Chris?
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. So the eyes have it on the item. Uh, and it is, the roster is approved. Uh, we're on to eight appointments and resignations.
Jack, could I, could I suggest that, uh, when, when Andy has a chance to sort this all out, that he would send us the official list that we just booked it on?
Yes, yes.
I, I like that a lot, Jakes. Yes.
I was going to, I was going to say that. I'm going to get that list, yes. I do apologize that it was not prepared for you ahead of time, so.
Can I ask one question, Jack?
Uh, go ahead. That's a little.
She doesn't have anything next to her. Is she not?
So Ms. Pickering was, um, actually, um, miscoded and should have been in the, um, Ms. Pickering is paid out of the grant. And, um, so she was miscoded this year, um, and we're moving her, uh, because she's being paid out of local. Um, so she's paid out of the consolidated grant or the ESRA grant. I, I off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah, because we didn't approve her to be out of the local last year.
She was miscoded for this school year. She was moved, she re, my understanding is she left being local and went to be paid out of the grant. And we just noted it a couple of, like a week ago, that she's been paid this whole year far out of local and she shouldn't be.
It, it no longer matters because we have voted for it. And I'm going to move us on to appointments and resignations, if any. Andy, do we have appointments or resignations?
I do not at this point.
Then we have with nine minutes to spare, uh, don't use it all, director's comments. Why don't we start with the people on the, uh, on the screen? Deb Wright?
Well, I, I, I appreciate being able to move through this. I, I'm, I'm certain that there would be more discussion otherwise. I, I understand people's need to speak on matters. However, we need to spend, um, more time crafting those before you actually get to it so that we can get through them. Cause there is more discussion that will be had, of course. Um, but that, that's it. Uh, I appreciate this meeting. Thanks, Jack.
Alrighty. Hardy Merrill?
Um, my main comment, I guess, is, uh, I reviewed the management letter today that, uh, I received. And I can see that there's, uh, quite a bit of work there to be done by the finance department. And I think in the future meetings, we're going to want to have regular updates on the progress against all of the needed recommendations.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Hardy. Um, Tina, you're, you're a member. You can speak if you have anything you'd like to say, even if you can't vote on anything.
No, no comment. Thank you.
All right, Molly, why don't you round robin who's in the room?
Priscilla.
Um, yes, I want to say congratulations to the 13 new junior National Honor Society members that I just saw get their pins tonight and the other seven seniors that got theirs earlier today. And just, it's a really nice thing to know that we have outstanding students that are being, that are being recognized. Um, just appreciate them, be kind to each other, be considerate. And these guys will go far. Thanks.
Yeah.
I would, I would hope that at our next meeting or the one after, we'll get to see year-to-date financials for the WNESU. Uh, I had requested that for this meeting, but obviously it didn't make the cut.
Um, I just want to thank the transportation report. Uh, we met you probably over the other building one time and I don't know if it was when you were in this position or right before. And I appreciate that you're putting the time to put into it.
Yeah. I have no comments at this time.
Chris?
Sorry, I have a Bruce presentation. I do. But it, it's time sensitive. So the pupil waiting bill is currently being considered by the, um, House. Uh, it was, a version was passed by the Senate. Uh, and now the House Ways and Means Committee has taken up this bill and they have, uh, this is kind of happening as we speak. They have proposed a completely different formula for funding. So I was digging around in the sand. I'm sorry, this isn't going to do you guys any good on screen. I, but I, this is a chart that was prepared by Julia Richer, right fiscal office for the legislature. It's modeling what happens if either the House or the Senate version passes and it's money. So, um, and it's, unfortunately, I only did one side. It showed all the districts in the state. Um, but, uh, and it's, so this is a very dense subject. I, I mean, even what they're proposing and how they're waiting pupils, like I struggle with it. I'm used to reading. But this chart is pretty nice because, uh, they took 2020 homestead equalized, uh, tax rates and compared them, how they would have changed. And the first, uh, column is what the Senate passed. And I've underlined our districts there. I struggled for a while to figure out what the heck you guys were named, but gosh, I got it. And, um, so you can see that under the Senate version, uh, the, the high school homestead rate goes up incrementally, not much at all. But what they're talking about in the House Ways and Means is a pretty substantial increase. Uh, in, in this case, it would have been 14 cents on the tax rate. So that, and, um, so the, the high school really would get hit by this if the House passed it. In Rockingham, um, there's a, there, by the Senate version, I think they, they would go down a little bit. By the House version, they go up a little bit. And, um, somehow the Union Elementary School District makes up no matter what. But go figure. And who knows what it would be once you're split apart, but, um.
Hang on one second.
Yeah.
It's eight o'clock. You went on.
You guys can still hear us and everything?
They're gone.
What just happened?
I don't know. I can hear them.
I, I can hear you guys, I think. No, I can't hear you. Somebody at the screen there? Cause I don't hear whoever is speaking at the screen. Is there somebody talking?
We can hear you, Jack.
Okay, so I'm going to continue while Andy fills with the screen. Cause anyway, um, this is, uh, being decided on this week or next week. I, there's really kind of no time for a board to take a position on it, but you might want, I think Emily Kornheiser.
That's right.
Done the House Ways and Means. And, um, so she might be somebody you want to contact. It seems like to me we're better off with the Senate version of this. And, um, this is about how you wait students. It, it's the offshoot of Act 173, which was passed a number of years ago. And David Clark's favorite topic. But, uh, this is where it's at now and, um, I just wanted to kind of update you. This was kind of the most, the easiest to figure out way to do it. There's a lot of information on the Vermont School Board Association website. They have a blog there where you can look at all the legislation that's going on and there are a lot of links to click on stuff, so.
All right. Uh, I see Andy's hand up even. Go ahead.
Jack, I just wanted to, uh, I just want to let everyone know, we lost the big screen here, so people, board members can't see you guys, but you guys are all still on and you can see all of that. So, I just wanted to let you know that they can't see you, but I, I just logged on so I can make sure it is all working. So you guys.
Uh, who, who else do we have in for director's comments? And by the way, thank you very much for that, Chris.
Sure. Well, I too want to thank, uh, Jim Rose for coming in with those suggestions, that thoughtful analysis. We do want to hear from you regularly, so thank you very much. And thank you, Molly, for taking that to your committee and we look forward to your recommendations. On the financial thing, I know you're doing everything you can. We, in addition to the SU, the, this board needing money, as you know, that the Union Elementary and Westminster folks are still waiting even for the 21 year-end numbers. So we look forward to that really soon. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
I received a phone call today from, um, a gentleman I do a lot of business with, have a lot of respect for, and he congratulated me and I thought, oh, what did I do? But he read in the paper the gentleman that you have hired to do our, our finance now. And he knows him fairly well and was, and said he will, he's going to be a very good addition to our staff. So that was nice to hear. Thank you. Jack, we're done here.
All right, Deb Wright?
You already did your.
You already did your.
I guess I'm the last one. Um, sorry, I'm the last one. Uh, just to note, the, uh, Senate bill is basically the one that we, uh, helped influence through the, uh, through the, uh, uh, through the, I forget what the, what David's, uh, group is called. But, uh, that's the one that we do want and it would be useful, uh, to, if you don't know who your, uh, state representatives and senators are, uh, probably, uh, we can get that information to you. Let me know who doesn't know and I can send something around. It would be useful to get a letter out because at least one of the Westminster reps has been kind of lovely on this stuff. I don't know who Athens and Grafton uh, representative is going to be next year because apparently we're being reassigned. Uh, but that's the way that one goes. But let's, uh, let's make sure that people hear from us. Phone calls are good, letters are good. Uh, it does matter. Uh, and my apologies for a few things getting to you late, uh, over, over the last little bit. Uh, we've been a little under the weather here. But, uh, we're going to smooth this process out if it kills me. And, uh, I, I already think it's better than it has been. So maybe that's just me. So with that said, it's 8:02, two minutes past the witching hour, uh, and I had entertained a motion to adjourn.
Next meeting, Jack?
Next meeting, pardon? I see, next meeting will be the fourth Wednesday, which is, uh, 14 days from now. Yes.
The third Wednesday, Jack, is school vacation.
That's right, you. Second and, uh, first and third. That's right. So, so, uh, 14 days from now. So that is on the 20th of April.
Just, uh, Jack, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. That, just so you are aware, that is school vacation week.
And you have a suggestion on this?
I, I don't. I'm just, I was just noting it, just so.
Just letting you know.
I'll, I'll be, I'll be around. So I'm not, you know, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just, um.
Usually we don't.
You might want to check to make sure you have a quorum.
We, we will, we will review that with all parties. Uh, and, uh, again, let me know if you, uh, hate your committee assignments and if you don't know what they are, uh, call me. So, uh, again, adjournment is, uh, now, um, looking for motion? I see Deb.
Oh.
All right. Uh, favor turn off your computers and go home.